Okay, let's start now that everybody's here.
Councilmember, Agency Director, Authority Member Molly.
Present.
Man.
I'm present.
Underwood Jacobs.
Here.
Vice Mayor, Vice Chairman Chris.
Present.
Mayor, Chairman Paris.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Tonight, the invocation is with Pastor Daryl Doris. That's why we waited. That's why we waited. That's why we waited sixteen minutes.
All right. Well, they've raided forty-two generations for Jesus, so we all right. Father, we thank you right now. We thank you for this great city. God, most of all, we thank you, Lord, for covering our cities this week, last week. Could have been a horrific tragedy. But we thank you by your grace, God, that it wasn't as bad as it could have been. So we say thank you tonight. God, we ask that you continue to rest over our city with grace and mercy and love. Touch our leaders, continue to give them wisdom, knowledge, continue to lead and guide them, God, in the ways of righteousness, in the ways that would help this city to stand tall. God, we ask right now that you continue to guide all of the city's workers and city managers, God, that work here. We ask right now you continue to unite our city in love. And all these things, we ask in your son's name, Jesus' name. Amen.
Can you undo the...
Yep. Everybody put your writing hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I remember you. How are you?
Fine, thanks.
Good. So, am I...I guess I'm reading this, right? And then you're just gonna ad lib it. You thought you did so well last time, you were gonna show me up this time.
That's right.
Somebody set you up. I would like to take a moment to recognize the city's Public Works team. These hard-working men and women are the front line in terms of keeping our city clean while also maintaining and upgrading our ever-changing infrastructure. This evening provides us an opportunity to recognize the many, oftentimes unsung heroes of our community and acknowledge through their accomplishments just a few of the department's successes. Include the ongoing conversion of the city's many streetlights to more efficient LEDs. You guys did that? Really? The revived twenty-five team treating more than two-hundred-and-thirty-five lane miles of roads throughout the city, the recycling of more than seventy-three thousand gallons of paint can nearly nineteen thousand gallons of used oil. What do you do with that? Huh? I'm serious, huh? You what?
We send it to another facility.
What do they do with it? The cleaning inspection of an average of more than thirty-two thousand sewer lines every month and saving taxpayers more than two-hundred-and-eighty million dollars over the next ten years. You guys ought to get a piece of that. That's just me, though. I'm a personal injury lawyer. We get a piece. The diligent and meticulous work of the Public Works staff does not go unnoticed. On behalf of the entire City Council, thank you for all you've done and continue to do for the betterment of our community. I officially proclaim the week of May twenty-first through the twenty-fifth Public Works Week here in the city of Lancaster. And there's Diaz. You're gonna help me. Right?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Well, those are the Boulevard people. Help me out here.
Just to be clear, he...they were talking about the sewers? And that's what he wanted a piece of?
The two-hundred-and-eighty million dollars they're saving over a decade, yes.
I don't care where two-hundred-and-eighty million dollars comes from. I'll take a piece of it. I mean, for the city, right? No, Marvin. We don't get it. It's for the city. Okay. Okay. City manager, anything to be removed?
No, sir.
Are there any speaker cards for the minutes?
None.
Is there a motion to...
Motion to approve M1?
Is there a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous.
On the consent calendar, we need to pull CC...
No, no, we have to approve the City Council's successor. Do I have to do M1?
You just did.
We just did, yeah.
Oh, I see. We did it for all of it? Okay, good. All right. Pull what? CC nine on me?
Pull CC five, CC seven, CC nine, CC ten, CC thirteen, and CC one-four.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the remaining items of the consent calendar?
I'll make a motion. We approve the consent calendar, pulling five, seven, nine, ten, thirteen, and fourteen.
Second that?
Before we vote, I just want to note for the record that item CC four is a public generally exception from the Conflicts of Interest Code, so to the extent that anyone had a concern, there is no conflict there.
Now, you got us worried. All right. Was there a second? Let's vote.
I saw that.
I get confused easy. All right, so what are we doing with the rest of it? I gotta leave on nine, right?
Can we do the speaker cards and then, uh, Michael?
I...I also need to recuse myself for CC ten for proximity to my business.
Okay. All right, Michael Reeves. CC five. Oh, you had something on all of them? Okay. All right.
Okay, Mayor Paris, Vice Mayor Chris, Council staff, ladies and gentlemen, I guess I have three minutes to discuss all these. The first one, CC five, is the agreement with the housing rights gender, thirty-five thousand dollars to provide fair housing services to the residents of Lancaster. I'm thinking that they're gonna provide that. I would rather have the thirty-five thousand dollars used by the city and the city hires somebody at work here for the city instead of somebody on the outside.
You can't have it, Michael. You can't.
Okay. CC nine is authorizing one point one million dollars to Viper Enterprises to reimburse them for their construction over there. I looked at the book on the city clerks. It didn't tell me too much about the agreement. This is to reimburse them. I would have liked to seen more details. CC thirteen is, I think you're gonna raise the fees for the lighting district, three point six percent based on the Consumer Price Index. And you're also gonna do that on the Lancaster Drainage District, CC fourteen. I don't think at this time citizens should be subject to an increase. If you drive around town, I see a lot of houses for sale in this town. And a lot of these houses that I see for sale are people who have kept up their yards. And I suspect that the taxes are getting to them. The taxes and other things are affecting their wanting to live in this town. We don't need to make additional hardships for people because the taxes are gonna go up, and I don't think the fees should go up for these different districts to make any further hardships on the people that want to stay here in Lancaster. Thank you.
Thank you. Ed Galindo, CC seven.
Your honor, council members. I'm really here to congratulate you guys. You've done a heck of a job with this approving professional service agreement. It appeared to me that in twenty-five days, you accomplished something that I couldn't accomplish in five years. You've received admissions. You've received...advertised. Then you received eight proposals. And twenty-five days after that, after going through this process, you evaluated this committee. You had...you checked all the committees. You checked each one of these eight corporations. And the committees within these corporations, all this done in twenty-five days. I thought it was fantastic. I was looking at your...what you've really accomplished on this thing, and I'd like to commend you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, Fran, CC ten.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council members, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Fran Saraseras. And I...I'm not sure this is a word to add what I have to say, but I'm gonna say it anyway. You're having public...downtown public property improvements, the way I read it. Well, this...I spoke...I spoke to a dress shop that's on the corner of Lancaster Boulevard and Cedar. And there she...her entrance is on Lancaster Boulevard, but there is no disability access or ramp to get into her shop. I had to go all the way around to the back to get in. Is there anything gonna be done for the shops that face Lancaster Boulevard that do ha...that don't...that do not have ramps to go into the shops to be able to shop? This...this particular business has, I think, three or four steps, and of course, there's no way I can go up. But I...I went in to...because I checked it, I thought it was a nice shop, but that's what I'm asking.
Some...we can take a look at that specific situation. Some older buildings, unless...and I'm doing this by memory, unless they do remodel or whatever, are grandfathered in not to have to meet the most current of ADA. Once they do a remodel or revision, then they have to bring it up to code. But we can look at that particular one and see where it's at.
Yeah, because...yeah, because you have to go all the way to the back, and then you have to go through this hallway. I mean, it's...yeah, I would like to maybe...I'm not making myself clear, I know.
No, you are. I just...I'm trying to think what the state law is regarding handicap access. And I don't know that it requires it to be contiguous to the front entrance. I just don't know.
As I recall, it requires access, but it doesn't require it to be from a particular location. But I haven't looked at the issue in some time.
Yeah, 'cause even to get into that building, I have to go through the back, and they have to open the door because they can't leave it open because it's too vulnerable for anybody just to walk in.
Then it's not access.
So, you know, so...
Right?
Yeah, I...I would have to take a look at it more closely.
All right, we'll look at it, Fran.
Thank you very much.
Okay, great.
You might thank the Boulevard ambassadors on this one.
Where are we doing this?
CC ten.
CC ten? So tell me what...help me out here. On CC ten, with the Boulevard folks, because I know you guys really want to stay here the whole evening and watch me do this meeting. Fascinating, but...
They're...they're here because the item is to set the public hearing for, I think, in July, and they're here for support, in support of that item, as is the Boulevard Association. And then, once they're done, they're gonna go back to work.
And thank you, guys, for what you guys do. We really appreciate it.
Okay, so do they have...
You've made a difference out there.
Do they have a presentation they wanted to give, or...
No.
No, we love you, guys. You guys are good.
I'll make a motion. We approve CC ten.
I'll second that.
Let's vote. It's unanimous. Oh, where's...oh, she's out. Okay, good. Okay, with councilperson Underwood Jacobs recusing herself, now you need to go out for nine.
I'll move that we approve CC nine.
I'll second that.
Let's vote. Passes with four yes votes, Mayor Paris recusing himself.
Okay, what do we have left?
I'll move that we approve CC five, CC seven, CC thirteen, and CC fourteen.
Second that? Let's vote. It's unanimous. Okay. Public hearing. Item number one, are there any speaker cards? Item one. Okay, we'll now hear from Marissa Diaz. What?
Mr. Mayor, I just didn't hear you declare it open, but others did.
Oh, the public hearing is now open, and we will hear from Marissa Diaz.
Correct.
Who I had a proclamation for earlier, but he was hiding it, so...
I wanted it for myself.
So that was the reason we were standing up there, wondering what to do next.
On December twelfth, two thousand six, City Council adopted Resolution Number zero-six-two-five, two-four-five, requesting withdrawal from the Consolidated Sewer Maintenance District.
Allison.
On April twenty-fourth, two thousand seven, City Council introduced Ordinance Number eight-seventy-six, adopting Chapter thirteen dot zero-nine of the Municipal Code establishing a sewer service charge, and also adopted Resolution Number zero-seven-eighty-nine, fixing the time and place for a public hearing relative to the collection of a sewer service charge beginning in fiscal year two thousand seven, two thousand eight. On May eighth, two thousand seven, Council adopted Ordinance Number eight-seven-six on June twenty-sixth, two thousand seven. After a public hearing, Council adopted Resolution Number zero-seven dash one-two-four, ordering and levying an operations charge and a replacement charge in the Lancaster sewer system for fiscal year two thousand seven, two thousand eight, and approved the maximum sewer service charge. The city began operations and maintenance of the sewer collection system on July first, two thousand eight, as directed by City Council. Each year, staff prepares an engineer's report for the City Council to determine the actual amount of the sewer service charge needed to fund the maintenance of the Lancaster sewer system. The engineer's report determining and proposing the sewer service charge for fiscal year twenty-eighteen, twenty-nineteen has been prepared. And we've provided the resolution to levy the sewer service charges for this fiscal year.
Thank you.
Yes, there's no change.
I'm sorry, what?
And there's no change to the fee.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Any questions?
Any questions? Michael Reeves?
Mayor Paris, Council staff, ladies and gentlemen, they are not gonna raise the fees on this, so I thank you very much, unlike the other districts you're gonna raise. They're not gonna raise it on the sewer district, so thank you.
Let's close the public hearing.
I'll move that we adopt Resolution Number one-eight dash two-four.
I'll second.
Let's vote. It passes unanimous. Okay. New business...new business item one?
No speaker cards.
Let's waive the staff report. Is there a motion?
I'll move that we award the Project One-eight dash zero-zero-six.
Second that? Let's vote. So where's Jeff today?
Jeff is at a conference. And we put Marissa here, and she's had a lot to do so far. She...half the items on the agenda were...were something that were Jeff's.
So, like, he stacked him up and then left town? Okay, I get it. Did we vote?
Yep.
New business item two.
Asked unanimously.
To what?
I was announcing the vote.
Oh, thank you. I saw a chicken run across the road. All right, new business item two. Presentation on process to adjust transient occupancy tax rate. And Britt? Where's Britt? That's you, because Michael has like talking today. Has a card.
Good evening, Mayor Paris, Vice Mayor Chris, and City Council members. I'm here to provide a very brief overview of what is needed if the council chooses to increase the city's transient occupancy tax. In order to increase the TOT, which is considered a general tax, voter approval of a ballot measure is required, and the election for the increase must be held at the same time as the regularly scheduled general municipal election, which in our case will be April fourteenth, two thousand twenty. A special election for this can only be held if an emergency is declared by the City Council. Currently, the threshold to approve an increase for the TOT is fifty percent plus one vote in favor of the measure. Wanted to make you aware that an initiative has qualified for the November twenty-eighteen ballot entitled the Tax Fairness, Transparency, and Accountability Act. If approved in November, this measure actually increases the threshold from the fifty percent plus one to a two-thirds vote of the electorate. The TOT was established in nineteen eighty-three and is currently assessed at seven percent. In addition, there's a self-imposed two percent fee collected for the Lancaster Tourism Business Improvement District, which is Destination Lancaster. Those funds are managed and distributed by Destination Lancaster for the benefit of the members. Other TOT rates for areas surrounding us or near us, Palmdale, Santa Clarita, Burbank, and Ridgecrest are all at ten percent. Tehachapi is at eight percent. The unincorporated areas of Kern County, such as Rosemond, are at six percent, and unincorporated areas of LA County are at twelve percent. An estimated nine hundred thousand dollars in additional revenue is anticipated if we increase the TOT to ten percent. If we want to have a measure on the ballot in April of two thousand twenty, these are the benchmark dates that we'll have to pay attention to or be aware of. January seventeenth, two thousand twenty will be the last day that we can actually call an election for a ballot measure. We have fourteen days after that, or if January thirty-first, if we wait until the seventeenth of January, which will be the last day the arguments and the impartial analysis would be due. February tenth, or ten days after the arguments are due, is the last day to file the rebuttals. And I can answer any questions, or I can try.
So, is there any way we could get this on the November ballot?
No, because we don't consolidate with the county. Our general municipal election is not until April of two thousand twenty.
I mean, if we had, like, an emergency?
If you declared an emergency, then you can...we can check into working with the county to have it placed on their ballot. And actually, we're gonna be pushing some deadlines to get that as well.
So, isn't it an emergency that they're gonna change the...
Yeah, does that constitute emergency?
What is the cost?
I would have to check with the county. They actually have an indicator or an estimator on their website that I could...
Isn't it a couple hundred thousand dollars?
I would anticipate, yes.
At least?
Yes.
So, we would be spending at least fifty percent of what we took in?
Well, nine hundred thousand minus two hundred thousand, don't we still make seven hundred thousand?
Without knowing, I...
I never finished high school, so I'm not sure.
Did you say nine hundred thousand?
Nine hundred thousand is the estimated revenue, yes.
That's good math. Seven, I like seven better than I like half of the original amount.
I am happy to check into that and get that information to you if you'd like.
If it's...if it's the council's pleasure, we can bring back...we can look into it further and bring back an item next meeting.
Do that, because I...
Regarding declaring an emergency, if...if that's the council's direction.
I mean, I don't...I don't have a burning desire either way, but I don't want to pass up on the opportunity. And I think we need to discuss it and make a decision and either go for it or not.
Yeah, and you're recommending to be par with our surroundings.
Yeah, I don't see any benefit for...for us, for an occupancy tax that is taxed to people from out of town, of not being on par with what's around us.
And clearly, that would give us more...I mean, since we've enacted the Tourism Bureau, I can say that we've made milestones. And now, when you sit with the...with all the different members, they have nothing but accolades to say about Monday through Friday, they are usually running right at capacity, and that the weekends now are starting to look like that as well. So, that's a positive for...so it's not like we're out of people coming in from the outside and...and using our facilities. I just want to let you know that. I mean, the last two meetings, that's...it's been nothing but positive.
What happens to the two percent self-imposed tax?
So, we...we collect that, and then we set up a budget.
I know what happens with it, but what would happen to it if we imposed...so, we would go to ten, and then it would actually be twelve?
Yeah, the hotels just re-upped that a couple...few months ago, so, yeah, it would just be on top of whatever. If you went to ten, it'd be on top of whatever you go to.
Yes.
I just want to alert the council that there's a possibility to make the time deadlines for the county. We may need to call a special meeting. So, if that's the case, we'll let...we'll poll the council for availability and...and take those steps.
You know, and I'd want to write it so that we...I mean, you guys may have a different view, but that we turn that back into tourism. But there's a lot of things we could be doing to attract people here on the weekends.
You could also...I know I've seen on the League of California Cities that some cities actually pass it as a cap. So you set the cap, and then the council chooses.
Scam, isn't it?
I'm just saying what I've seen.
No, I'm just saying ultimately, this has been very positive. And obviously, it's not just the hotels that have been benefit. It's all the...there's other businesses, obviously, when people come into town, they don't skip eating meals, and, you know, there's...and they don't not go somewhere. Usually, it's an activity or something taking place predominantly besides the Monday through Friday activities, you know, of work that brings them to town.
We got the soccer. We got the softball. You know what we need now? Pools. Waterfall. You know, they have these massive tournaments. We could grab that market, just a thought. But there's markets out there we could grab. And I think we ought to be looking at a way to fund it so that it's not on the back of the taxpayers. Okay? Or at least our taxpayers.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So you know...you know what I want you to do? Thank you.
Yeah, we will...we will go back, look, and if there's time periods, we will, as Allison said, set a special meeting.
Then it gives us a dry run on putting it on the general ballot with the county. We've got to do that twenty-two anyway, right?
There...there are differences, but yes, most of the steps would be the...
Okay, good. Thank you. All right, MB three. All right, MB3. Oh, Michael, you, well, we're not voting on it. Does he get to talk about it? Oh, okay.
Mayor Paris, Vice Mayor Chris, council staff, ladies and gentlemen. You know, right now, we're at a competitive advantage by having a lower tax than the other cities. Britt just gave you that they're, what, 10, 12%? And we're lower than them. Why don't we keep that competitive advantage? And like Councilman Mann said, the facilities are being used, and they're increasing on the weekends. They'll make it up on the volume, and you end up with the same amount of money, but it makes us competitive. Why keep raising taxes on people? That's what I'm getting up here all the time. I'm going to get up again about it. You're raising taxes and fees, people cannot take it anymore. $4 a gallon gasoline and all this stuff, and now you're going to raise, you want to raise taxes on the people who have a motel room, you want to raise the fees on all this and that. It's enough, we can't take it anymore. Thank you.
Michael, look at the public facilities it could build.
So we need to just acknowledge that that needs to be received and filed?
You don't even need to do that.
Okay.
Okay, MB3?
Mayor, before we get into this matter, unlike other cities that are in the immediate area, I don't want to have problems. So my intention is to abstain on MB3, but I'm going to be present unless Allison tells me I need to step out of the room. My son works for Waste Management.
That's not a legal conflict.
Okay, I'm still going to abstain. I just don't, like I said, unlike other people, I just don't want to go down that road.
What other people? Be more specific.
People to the South. They seem to have a conflict with understanding when they should vote and when they should not vote.
Oh, you mean the guy that makes the, never mind.
And I just don't want to give anybody the impression that I'm confused.
Okay, well, you confuse the mayor. All right, MB3. You got any speaker cards?
Yes, I just gave it to you.
Where'd it go?
I don't know.
Oh, it's the same name, that's why I, all right. Yes.
Mayor Paris, city council members, pleasure to report to you on the end of negotiations with Waste Management. A little bit of history. In May of '07, our previous council entered into an agreement with Waste Management to make several changes. Services were upgraded, fees were changed, rate escalators were added, there was compliance with state law, but a lot of these changes were good, but the escalators for the CPI were quite volatile. And that came to light in December of 2012, when the council approved some amendments. Part of what the council did at that point, this council, was reduce residential rates by 2%, increase commercial rates by 3%, instead of the contractually allowed 10% and 13% that would have happened under the old contract, so saving the community money, the residents and businesses. The term was also extended to 2027 at that time. Franchise fee increased for city programs and projects. $1 million a year fee for Waste Management was added to take care of roads because of the wear and tear of the vehicles on the roads. The city got back its ownership of the material waste stream. Services and sponsorships were added, worth about $250 million annually to the city, and there was a one-time fee paid to the city of $6.9 million. So that was a very, very good amendment, fair to Waste Management, very good for the residents and businesses. However, even though it was excellent, the CPI factors, which had to carry forward, even though it was capped at 4%, if the rates and the factors were higher, that would just be carried forward. Well, because of that, the city and Waste Management have deferred rate increases and pass-throughs for two years. In fact, the publics had no adjustments to the rate in five of the last eight years. And over the last eight years, the increase has been almost nonexistent, 18 cents a month, $2 a year on average. Well, that's good in one way, deferring all of that is not good, and it's usually not good policy, because contractually, those increases are there. So what we've done, and I thank Vice Mayor Chris for leading our team, and Waste Management for being good partners, is we figured a way out to stabilize rates going forward, to catch up in the best way possible for the public, and to extend the contract and have a one-time fee paid. Based on the actions before you, the catch-up would be, the first year would be $3 a month, or about $36 a year total. After that, it would be about $2 per month, and every time after that, the rate would be about $1 per month, or $12 a year. That gives rate stability to the public, to businesses, to residents. This is an example of residential through 2030. The city would also receive a fee of $7.5 million, and the contract would be extended for three years. With the approval of this council, the city attorney would prepare the documents for Waste Management in the city to execute. Again, I'd like to really thank Marvin for his leadership in this area. He knows the industry, and he led our team. And I'd really like to thank Waste Management, their representatives are here. They could have, at a couple of turns, asked for a pretty significant rate increase because they were contractually allowed to do that, and instead, they worked with us to try to defer it or make it more palatable, and I think they've been a very good corporate partner for us.
Can you talk about how SB1 would have affected the rates?
That's a good point. One of the factors in why it's volatile is it's a pretty complex formula. One of them has to do with the cost of fuel. Well, that doesn't take into account the cost of fuel plus taxes. So anytime taxes are raised at the federal or state level, that would have had an impact on the rate adjustment, or the CPI adjustment for the, for the trash hauling.
Maybe they should use electric trucks?
I don't disagree with that. And I think in the next, I think you'll see that.
So couldn't Josh give us a better deal? I mean, his father's on the council, for heaven's sakes.
No, I think that that was left up to Marvin, and so that was in Marvin's hands, and he was the expert at that, so I don't know.
I mean, if it was my son, he'd give us a better rate, Ken.
Okay. Remember now, we don't want to jump into bed like the people in the South.
That's true.
Yes.
He'd still give us a better rate.
[laughter]
Okay, any questions? I mean, other than the lack of parenting here.
A lack of what?
Parenting.
Thanks.
Speaker.
I will remember that, thank you much.
I know you will. It's coming, I can feel it. Okay, Michael Reeves.
Good evening again. This will be the last time I get up. Three, yeah, I know you're happy about it. 3.5% increase in the contract, automatically, 3.5%. You know, we've been talking about the CPI versus the, we haven't talked about the inflation rate. We need to have somebody from economic school come up here and talk about the inflation rate versus CPI before you approve all these CPI things, because CPI gives certain people a certain edge.
I got a banker sitting next to me. She tells us about that all the time.
Well, you know...
Thank you, Angela.
$36 is a lot of money to somebody that's retired. You know, Mark, if you want to give me 36 bucks, I'll take it. I mean, I'm a low-income senior. I go to the senior center maybe once a week, get a meal. I get, I get food from the food bank truck that helps me out. I mean, and then I get my property tax bills, and they go up, and I live in the same house, the same neighborhood, and they go up, and the mortgage company says to me, well, you owe us more escrow because your property taxes gone up. This goes on every year, and then we are going to have an increase from Waste Management because they have to meet their costs. They say on their trucks, they're natural gas trucks, they're not electric trucks, Mayor Paris, by the way. So you want me to feel sorry for them? Religiously, I separate my trash, I do everything, you know, they want me to do, and now you're going to raise my fees. I can't afford it. I know a lot of people in this town can't afford it. But let's don't put it in the contract. If they don't want to do business in Lancaster, fine, there are other Waste Management companies that we can deal with. We're not obligated to stay with Waste Management, and we're not obligated to keep, give them 3.5 for the next three years. Thank you.
You know, he brings up an interesting point. Do their trucks say clean natural gas or natural clean gas?
I don't know, but Waste Management rep is here if you'd like.
They're green.
Good evening, Mayor Paris.
Good evening. Tell me about this truck thing. What do they say about natural gas?
Some of them say we're powered by natural gas because we do have liquid natural gas vehicles in the Antelope Valley.
Yeah, but do they say clean natural gas, or...
I think they say, they just have the LNG symbol, and then they may say fueled, because we have the Altamont landfill where we can convert trash methane gas from the landfill into liquid natural gas, and some of our vehicles are fueled with that, so they indicate that, but I don't believe it says clean.
Good.
I'd have to go back.
Make sure, would you? I mean, because, you know, the gas company, I mean, it's just a lie. I mean, it might be cleaner, but there's nothing clean about it.
Yeah, I don't believe that they say clean. I think that they say alternative fuel or natural gas, but I will definitely take a look.
Thank you. Okay.
No parenting comments? Okay.
Careful, careful.
My parents are okay.
You know, I've known you since you were a child. It would be really easy to revert into that.
Okay, move to approve MB3.
Second that.
Okay, with Councilman Mann abstaining, it's unanimous.
And that was based on parenting, for the record?
Lack of parenting, lack of parenting, I want to be clear, in case anybody got it wrong there. All right, council reports. No, we got the council agenda. Next meeting, we will do the appointments of the Vice Mayor, Edwards Air Force Base Restoration Advisory Board, Antelope Valley Transit Authority, Antelope Valley Air Quality Management District, Southern California Association of Governments, North County Transportation Coalition, that has three appointees, one must be on the council, the Antelope Valley Fair Authority, there's two appointees, the Visitors Bureau of Lancaster, one appointee, Lancaster Housing Authority, five appointees, Southern California Regional Airport Authority, one appointee, and the Audit Representative, one appointee. If you want to stay where you're at, let me know, but you also have to let me know what you've done in the last year. Anybody who wants to switch it up, let me know that too, preferably by text or an email, and then we'll sort it out next meeting, okay?
Just for the record, the Antelope Valley Fair Authority, it's, one of those has to be from the Friends of the Fair.
Yeah.
Okay, just...
Remember when you guys did that. What was I thinking? Okay. All right, council reports. Antelope Valley Transit Authority?
We hired a new...
I've been reading about you, by the way, but go on.
Well, let's talk about that. There was an article in the LA Times that said how good the electric buses are. They reported that we could only, that Metro required them to have 160 miles per charge. AV Transit Authority gets 170 per charge. But what the article did not say, it did not tell about how BYD is a disadvantaged employer now, which hires 25% veterans, disadvantaged employees, and it is now unionized, and it's a living wage. So we have between 700 and 800 new jobs that the council has created, that AVTA has helped create, so I think that's all good. There's some political problems in the article, but we won't get into that. AV Transit Authority did hire a new executive director, Macy from BYD. He is the chief executive officer of BYD. He will now take over June 1st, and he's taking over because Len Engel is retiring. So it came to our attention that he was available. He is the best one with the most knowledge in regards to electric. Most people are not authorities on electric buses. He is the most qualified individual that we looked at and we found, so we were very happy to make him an offer today, which he did accept. You want us to go into the other reports while we're doing?
Sure, might as well.
We did a new COG, which is a council of governments. A council of governments included Santa Clarita, Palmdale, Lancaster, and the County of Los Angeles, and for the first time, we put all three together, and it's the NCTC, which is the North County Transportation Commission. And that commission looks at all the transportation issues and everything that the county has. It's the first, but it's the ability of all four jurisdictions to work together. So it's the first time it's ever been done, and we look forward to doing that.
He forgot to tell you that he was also elected chairman unanimously, so we might want to keep that in mind next council meeting when we do a realignment.
How do you pull that off?
I'm not quite for sure, but...
Qualification only.
The supervisor even spoke in a positive way to support that position as well, so just thought I'd share that with you.
Well, I'm not surprised by that, but notice how he seems to.
We work good together, all of us, so it's, we're trying to get our fair share of transportation money, and we can look at realigning where that transportation money comes, so...
So why are we content with our fair share?
We're not. That's, I'm not, I haven't been.
Well, we, historically, as Ken would say, we have received 17 cents on the dollar for every dollar that we put in taxes.
So don't they owe us a lot of money?
They do.
I mean, if it's going to be fair...
Right, and we've got our foot on the pedal to continue making sure that we get all of our money and then some.
And at the AVA QMD, we did the low, we still have the lowest rates in the entire region, so the rates for the gas stations and everything that's out there, the one thing that we did instruct the general manager over there is to, the fines need to start coming in more in regards to if there's a dust problem at the solar fields and that, so there will be more disciplinary action from the AVA QMD. But we're still the lowest in entire Southern California. We did a rate adjustment, and with that rate adjustment, it shows that we are underneath South Coast, Ventura, Bakersfield, and Mojave.
Correct.
So it's, we're still the lowest and still doing well, so everything's on track.
Thank you. You know, I was thinking about the last meeting, and the lady who had...
Valley fever.
You know, the valley fever. And I'm wondering if we should be paying attention to some type of testing program or, you know, like at the fair or something? Is there something we can do to do a screening?
I don't know the answer. I do know we've been directed by council to come back and look at the fee and what it could be used for. I know that Congressman McCarthy's office, when you met with him, is very interested in that, and in fact, has funded some studies up in Bakersfield, so we can certainly look at that. Honestly, it's a very, very good idea if we make it easy for people.
idea if we make it easy for people. Just like, I don't know what the test is, but I know when you offer people body fat analysis, blood tests, any of those things, they take advantage of it if you put it in front of them. So we can certainly look at that.
It just seems if we can have some early intervention, there's less likely to develop some CLPD.
Jason reminded me too, I'm sorry for interrupting. Jason reminded me too that you had asked for, to have the expert come and speak before the planning commission and also the council. That's a question that we can ask then too.
Okay, good. Thank you. All right. Anything else? We're done? City Manager?
Couple of things before you or before the public and before the council. On June 12th will be our budget public hearing. Want to thank the council for all of their hard work, their input and everything. I think we're very proud of what we're going to present as the budget for the city. That will be June 12th. And council's been very good about not only providing direction, but challenging us at times. So we thank you. We did have the honor of going to the Mother's Day tea. Councilwoman Underwood Jacobs was there. Her daughter read a tear jerking poem. But I don't know if you want to say anything about the Mother's Day tea?
Actually, it was exceptional. It was Forest for the Trees is what it was titled. My daughter had the opportunity to read a poem that she had written for the occasion. And Andy is always, you know, had a, it was a fantastic day. So it was nice.
Yeah, it's one of those undiscovered events at the, I mean, it's always sold out, but people don't know what they're missing. And we have a lot of staff members that goes well too. It's really good. I also had the honor of attending the tent revival for three days. As a Catholic, it scared me a little bit when Daryl and a few others spoke. Scared me a lot, to be honest with you. But I want to thank the council and I know-
He almost got saved.
Some would say, some would say I was saved when I was baptized. I want to thank the council. I know Deputy Mayor may have something to say. There are very few city councils that would allow their parks to be used for something like that. We just take it for granted that the pastors come and say, hey, we want to do this and do that. And you guys didn't even bat an eye. And I think it's a testament to the council and the community that no one challenges that. But that doesn't happen in most cities. And I thank you personally for that. I know the others do too. I don't know if you want to-
Yeah, I would like to say thank you also. It was amazing to see all the faiths and ethnicities just come together and just worship. And I mean, we had Catholics and Pentecostals and Baptists and, and we also did a lot for the community for-
Remember, we let Baptists go?
Yeah, we let Baptists in there too. We let everybody in there. Even the parks, some of the park supervisors, different ones came in.
I'd have come if I'd known Baptists could come.
Ah, we allowed any and everybody in there. I mean, it was just an amazing event. Probably had over 1,000 people for the three days there. Gave away tons of clothes, tons of food. We had Salvation Army helped us. We did a lot of social services. So it was just amazing. And yes, it was a little exuberant the last day. I was myself. They asked me to end it and we ended with a great celebration. But I am just honored to be a part of a city that is not ashamed of allowing Christians to celebrate God. So thank you for that. A lot of pastors were just totally impressed by how you guys allowed us to be who we are and do what we do. So thank you for that. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
I always find that odd. I mean, you know, it's, there's city facilities. They're for people who live in the city. They're for-
I will say this, if I could say this, I was talking to the park supervisor and he actually, he said he wished we could have more events like this. He said while we were there, the riffraff that they normally have there were either in the tent revival or did not come. And that whole weekend, it was just an easy weekend for them. So he was stating, he was stating that he wished we had more events, not necessarily just Christian, but more big events because it made the city come out and be engaged. And it was just a different environment, different type of element there. So, and we had a great conversation with the park supervisor there. So he was, I mean, he was there every day.
You got him in trouble now.
Well, that was a lot of work. I don't think I could do one all the time, but that was a lot of work.
Jeff's going to assign him to now be in charge of all those new events he wants to do.
Well, he did work all three days. I think he volunteered for him to be a part of it.
Yeah, he was, it was actually cool to see because he not only went in it, but he was really getting in the spirit of it. And it's just, it's hard to explain. It was just truly a good thing and well attended. Last thing I have-
I'm surprised we don't have the tennis. People who play tennis thank us for letting us play on the tennis courts. I mean, you get my drift. It's-
Yeah. But again, I mean, you know, if you look around, most cities, that would, it would take public comment and weeks of gnashing of teeth. So it's cool. It's very cool. And speaking of cool, last thing is we have a short video. Last year, we had Powhau Antelope Valley or Powhau Lancaster for the murals. This is sort of a preview, a very cool mural that kids from RX Paris High School have just finished on Lancaster Boulevard.
The curator at Moa, Andy Camagnoni invited Powhau in from Hawaii last year to do murals up and down the boulevard. And it was a screaming success. So they're going to repeat it again in October 14th through the 18th.
You have some students here from RX Paris High School?
Andy invited us to come out early, which works out better because last year we got to do a mural on the Avens Building, but we didn't get to interact with the artists very much. So I'm really excited that the kids are going to get their mural done ahead of time. And then when the artists are out here working, my kids can volunteer and apprentice under the artists that are visiting from all over.
What's the inspiration for the mural that they're painting today?
We presented folk art as a concept from El Salvador. And the restaurant owner asked for a cantarito, which is a water jug. So we have a lady in the traditional clothing with a cantarito on her head. The concept is El Salvador arriving in the AV.
We mixed in folk art with Antelope Valley's animals and wildlife.
It's a fun way to like get involved in school and like get along with other students. We can always look back to the mural and like, oh, this, I did this back with my school and it's really cool. I feel like that's just like a nice memory.
So have we changed the ordinances that they, anybody can do that now?
Well, anyone can't do it. We have it go through the Public Arts Commission, through the museum. Because they're all on private buildings, most of them are on private buildings. The building has to give their permission. So we work with the property owner and the tenant. But we have 12 downtown. We'll have at least, I don't know, Jeff, how many? I think at least 12 more in October. So the idea is to just keep putting it there. We also in October will have a sort of an experiment of a art crosswalk that will be on the corner where Moa is. The mayor had brought an idea to us, I think from downtown LA. So that's also going to be part of the October event.
Good. Okay, thank you. City Clerk?
This is the time to address the city council agency and authority on non-agendized matters. Speaker cards can be found on the back table of the council chambers. Individual speakers are limited to three minutes each. State law prohibits the city council from taking action on items not on the agenda and your matter may be referred to the city manager. Thank you.
Before I do this, the Vice Mayor has a great idea, but I think we should expand it. Could we get a, an analysis of the crime rates, like when the revival was going on? But I also want to, you know, like when the Poppy Festival was going on?
Sure.
When we have these different events, is it raising it or lowering it? Because I think we might be surprised. It might be actually lowering.
I never thought of it. I think we would be surprised to see it. We can certainly do at least down to the RD district solely if we can get that during those weeks.
Okay. All right. Shannon McDonald?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Deputy Mayor, all council members and everyone here. I really just wanted to come up here and thank you for a job well done from all of you. And also, Public Works, I can't, I'm just astounded, I'm astounded how, how busy they are. Like every single day I see them out there. I have one big issue though with, with streets themselves. I just felt like there's no, is there any way that we, I know it's a lot of work and maybe costs more money, but it seems like the same roads that are being fixed are the same ones getting torn up repeatedly over and over again. The same, the same issue. And I'm trying to figure out what is it about the asphalt that we're using that's causing them to break up the way that they do?
What you may be seeing is, you know, when a developer comes in and is, you know, like the Hunter facility over on 10th Street. And then they require to do things under the street. You know, so it gives the appearance that the road is being repaired and it's really not. They're just repairing the damage they did when they dug the hole to put in
They caused, huh?
The sewage or whatever they're putting under the street. But the rest of your question, I don't know. But go on.
Well, just a comment really. That's, that's just really what it was. And just to thank Public Works for what they, what they do. It's a dangerous job to stand out there and be at risk like that with drivers that aren't paying attention. I just wanted to give them a shout out because they work really hard. I just want them to continue to get recognition for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
George Betty?
Evening. Mayor Paris, Vice Mayor Chris, council members, ladies and gentlemen. I commend all of you for a job well done. But there's a few things that we, I would like to have you guys, ladies and gentlemen, do a, adopt a resolution on these empty homes. We have one at 2132. Code Enforcement took a complaint. They told that person they would not respond until there was more complaints coming in. I called to do the complaint. They tell me they're not taking any more complaints. They already got it. So Code Enforcement did finally come out and they had a crew come out and clean up the front yard. It took about eight to 10 trailer loads. That's how bad it was. Now, my biggest concern is the two deputies that declared it a, what do you call the legal term?
Due process.
Due process to go into this home. They came out the front door throwing up. My neighbor on my left brought out wipers to help clean them up. I served them water. I'm very concerned about our deputies going in these homes like that. They counted in at least one dog, if not 10 cats. And it was impossible to determine how many animals were in there. It's been over there empty for a good year and a half. The said owner came eight months ago and left, who happens to be an LA County Fire Department paramedic. My point is I'd like to have the city council do a resolution, bless you, and have a plan set up. That's animal cruelty to know in, no food, no water. I don't even know if there was a survival of the fittest that took place in there. And it's, like I say, it's hard to looking in to actually determine how many more animals are in there. Now, when this house is officially opened, why isn't there a set plan with the Board of Health? Deputies should be with protective gear going into these homes. I mean, it's just hideous. When you see these poor guys coming out throwing up, come on, that's a clue right there. Something's going on. I assume the city who did initiated the clean in the front will put a lien or whatever against the property owner, whoever it may be, either the lady that was living there or her husband. We've never seen him. God knows if he's in there dead. But I'd just like to see a resolution set up to where we can have a plan of cleanup internally on these homes.
I think there is a plan. There were active cases when Mr. Beatty called. There were active cases on both those homes. We do not wait for a multitude of complaints to do it. If there's health and safety issues, they get dealt with immediately or animal control, they do. So those are both active cases when Mr. Beatty called. That said, there is a frustration level because the law protects the property owner's rights and you have to notify him, you have to get it. Then once you do that, then you can go in. We do lien the properties and, but we have to go through a process so the owner can do that. I don't know the fire department, or excuse me, the sheriff's department's protocols. And I don't know who owns the property. So, but yeah, those were active cases that were being actively worked and we don't wait for a multitude of complaints.
Oh, okay.
Well, I'm more concerned that when George called, that they said they're not taking anymore. What does that mean?
That's what I'm saying. That, I would find that, we would look at that. We already had a case when Mr. Beatty called, okay? But even if we didn't have a case, if someone called about an issue, we wouldn't say we're not taking anymore. I would have to look back on that.
That's what they said to me. That we already got a complaint, we're not taking any more complaints about that address, 2132 Beechwood.
That might have been-
I mean, I could see somebody saying that.
Yeah, it could, if, if those were the exact words.
You need training.
Yeah, it was.
Well, the idea being is, I mean, I could, I could understand somebody saying, we're not taking anymore because we're already taking action.
Yes.
You know, that it, that it's, but I think we need to work on how we convey that information to the public when they call. Because I'd-
And what about the deputies? I mean, I'm so concerned about their wealth, you know, their own wealth.
The issue, the issue on that is, is, you know, we don't tell the sheriff's department how to do their business.
Now, back up now. We're supposed to be working together.
No, I know, I know. But obviously that would be a concern if deputies are going into a situation so, am I hearing it? Sorry, are you hearing it over there?
But animal cruelty is on board on this complaint?
If there were animals involved, they absolutely would.
Oh, they would be listed on the sheriff's report.
They would be called. That's their job and we, I'm sorry.
No, I say that it should be on the sheriff's report. The two deputy sheriffs that did due process to enter that house, when they came out throwing up, they're the ones that told us there was at least one dog in there that we didn't know about. But there's probably 10, 15 cats.
To say nothing of the husband. Say nothing of the husband that disappeared.
Yeah, yeah. And with all the trash in there, I wouldn't want to be going in there seeing if there's a human in there.
Okay. Thank you, George.
Yeah.
Okay. We will work on the way we, you know, maybe we just need to have set scripts. Okay?
Yes.
Good. David Paul, did he leave?
Yes. Good evening again, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. Ladies and gentlemen, I just wanted to bring up, I wasn't able to, I wasn't able to go to the, my commissioner's meeting last week because I had to go down to downtown to Supervisor Awards luncheon. But I did watch it, I did watch the video. So I didn't, I wasn't there physically, but I was in spirit. And I'm happy to say that I really was pleased with what I saw and what I heard and the accomplishments that are being done with Kensington Building on 32nd Street and I. I just want to let you know to, that things are happening and I'm very happy about it. And I thank you all and I thank the commission and Toy and her, her people. And God bless them all. Thank you.
Thank you. Have we broke ground yet?
No.
Broke ground on Kensington? That's June 14th is the ceremony.
What time?
I mean, they, as is all projects with Scott, he's quicker than most developers. So yes, he's already graded, but the official groundbreaking is the 14th.
Good, thank you. Heather Brown? Heather, you were late, but we're going to take it anyway.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. I'm not here to talk about the water, even though that really still needs to be cleaned up. But the- though that really still needs to be cleaned up. But the one-way streets, the single lanes, Mark, because you blamed him last time I was here. I've seen four accidents on Lancaster Boulevard now. The street was backed up from 20th Street West all the way to 10th. There was traffic. And that was after 3:00. I don't know what your determining factor was for making all the lanes down to single. But on 20th Street West to J and Lancaster Boulevard, that one section, and I don't know, I guess you're going to do Avenue I. But I avoid those streets now. So if there's a business on those streets, and I've asked other people, too, I said, well, what do you think of the single lane? And they said, well, that's just temporary. I said, nope, it's permanent. And they said, well, we avoid those lanes. So isn't that going to hurt business? Not to mention blow people's engines up when they're sitting there one light, two lights, with their air conditioning going full blast during the summertime in 110-degree weather? I mean, that's not a very, not very thought through. I mean, I don't know what your research was, but I'm very good with research. If you need any help, I'd be glad to help you, free of cost. So if you, you know my number.
Well, Heather, why would I want somebody to research it who...
Well, because you guys didn't research it.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. Who comes in and the argument is that the engines are going to blow up.
I'm just saying, when people sit at the light one time, and then the second time in 110-degree weather...
Well, what I'm more concerned about is if we're having a traffic problem there, because of the road diet we put it on.
Well, Lancaster Boulevard, I've seen four accidents. So I don't know what caused them.
Okay, but that's not necessarily causative, you know?
Well, I think it's because the light turns, and then people don't go right away. I mean, that's what I've experienced, because I live on Lancaster, near Lancaster Boulevard. And then what happens is the people that are on their cell phones, sitting there at the light usually, this is what I've observed, is they're on their cellphone, they don't pay attention to the light, and then they don't go. And so the people behind them that aren't go when the light turns green and hits them, I guess. I mean, I've almost...
If it was up to me, the cellphone would blow up if it was in their hand while they were driving.
You would think so. Well, I don't know about that. I guess it's the temperature thing.
I mean, that'd be appropriate. It really would.
I think you have to sleep with your cellphone to have it blow up under your ear.
The, the problem with people talking on cell phones in any capacity while they're driving...
Correct. It's illegal.
I mean, if they kill themselves doing it, you know, I'm sorry. But it's everybody else they kill.
Well, yeah, well, yeah. But I don't use a cellphone in my car, so, you know, it's not, I just observe. Anyway, I just thought you might want to know that those people that are, have noticed the traffic change, avoid those streets now. So I'm not sure how it's going to affect the businesses, but I would think that it would, by summer, if they know that there, there's going to be major congestion on 20th Street West before J and on Lancaster Boulevard and 10th, and I guess Avenue I now, that they're going to avoid those streets.
I don't know. Marissa, what did you do to our streets?
Well, just another item, I asked people how much they thought it would cost the city to repave those streets. They said $4 million, $10 million. No one guessed $60. When I told them that, they were kind of surprised.
The $65 million that we have is for our Measure R project, specifically at the interchanges. But no, it doesn't cost $60 million.
Well, I said, I could be wrong, if you might want to check on it yourself. But how much was it?
Yeah.
What do we do to make certain that the, I mean, I've been getting face mail messages.
What you do before you do it, the road diet only works when you have a certain traffic volume or below. So every time they look at is that. You also look at it from a accident standpoint as well, too. And then the after, you look at it as well, too. So for example, on Valley Central Way, after the road diet was done, we studied afterwards, accidents were down and traffic volumes were up. So it did not affect that. And we'll do the same thing on 20th. 20th, south of J, did not go down to one lane in each direction because the volumes are too high there. The area north of it, where there's not businesses and there's limited access, did. But we certainly look at all of that. The other beauty of a road diet is its striping and painting. If it doesn't work, you didn't change the geometrics of the street, you could re-stripe it if you ever get volumes that require you to. But it does reduce accidents and fatalities.
But the volumes have gone up on Lancaster Boulevard, because they're switching from Avenue I to Lancaster Boulevard. And then the, the light at 20th and Lancaster Boulevard is, you have the construction there, so it's been blinking a lot. So that's what backs it up. So it's not permanent. It's...
Regarding the, the light, is that...
Yeah. And then, too, I'd like to chime in here. With having revived 25, are we no, I mean, people need to realize that there's going to be street construction. I mean, in the presentation to us, I mean, we're going to have active projects, because there's some catch-up work to do. And, you know, that's unfortunate. There's people that are going to be disappointed. But I think that's, I mean, it's damn if you will and damn if you don't. You got to get the roads fixed, right? Right?
Regarding the light at 20th and J in Lancaster Boulevard, if we could look at the times that we're having it flashing, I think that's what's causing a bit of a backup, maybe 20 cars deep at about 8:30, 9 o'clock in the morning. So if we can look at the timing of that, that would be very beneficial, I believe.
Yeah, we will. That's during temporary construction, but we will look at that, and we adjust. We have people there every day looking at it, so we will do that as well, too.
Thank you.
Thank you. Johnny. No last name, no... What do you think your share?
My name's Johnny. I came over here to speak about the skate community and how there's not a skate park in Lancaster. There's two in Palmdale, but there's not one in Lancaster. And I feel like having a, having a skate park in Lancaster, it would definitely help a lot, because the skate community is getting bigger, and not that many people pay attention to skaters. It's really hard for us to, like, find somewhere to skate without getting kicked out of, and it's really hard. And I feel like if there was a skate park, it would be really helpful for us to not, it would, it would give us somewhere to go and skate and definitely keep kids off the street. Instead of like, like, every kid has an, has a, has a, excuse me, every kid has, like, something to go out of their way to do something. So for example, like, if a kid's struggling at home, you know, his parents are, like, abusive, and he doesn't want to be there, he could always go to the skate park instead of, like, going out. And someone on the street could offer him, like, some drugs or something, he could turn out to that. Versus at the skate park, someone would probably offer him a skateboard and be like, here's a skateboard, like, you know? Like, I think it would be really helpful in the community. Yeah.
You know, the, the problem I'm having with your argument is the downside you list. I mean, that, that, I just don't see how not having a skate park is causative of any of those issues. What does intrigue me is if there's two in Palmdale, where there's some, some data we can get as to the viability of them. And perhaps we're wrong in not being more aggressive in attempting to establish one. You know, we ought to reach across and find out what, what did it cost, what problems, if any, is it creating? What is the satisfaction level of the community that's using it? But I've been hearing this now for the 10 years I've been sitting here. And so there might be something to it. I'm a slow learner. You know, initially, the concern was, one, is the cost, but two, is it's an attractant of a lot of problems. You know, but maybe it's not. Maybe they figured out the way to, to manage them in a fashion that those problems are just in their head and not in reality. I'd like to know. Okay? So, you know, 60 days, can we have something back? So we'll look at it. And, you know, we'll look, look at what their results have been. And you, you could have a good point.
Thank you. I appreciate your time.
Thank you. But, but I don't want you taking any drugs in the meantime, okay? All right. We're done, right? We don't have a closed session? The city council will adjourn in memory of Bishop Grover Lee Tally, a loving husband, wonderful father, and founder of the Antelope Valley Church of God in Christ. Bishop Tally was born on March 11, 1918. That's 100 years ago. In, yeah, 100 years ago. In Texarkana, Arkansas. In 1939, he moved to Los Angeles, California, and was called into the ministry in 1941, which was the same year he was drafted into the United States Army and served overseas for three years during World War II. Bishop Tally relocated to the Antelope Valley in 1951 and founded the Antelope Valley Church of God in Christ in 1952, the year I was born. And I'm old.
Yeah.
Bishop Tally touched the lives of many people through his work in the Antelope Valley and leaves behind a great legacy for his family and the community. That, wow, 100 years. Where was Al Roker? Wasn't it Al Roker that did the 100-year?
Yes, he sold it.
The next meeting, our next meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, June 12, 2018, at 5:00 PM. Carol, my day is done, and I'm coming home.